Oh, look at that. All right, here we go. A minute late. Um, Yell municipal code title two updates.
Hi Karen Bennett. Just have a few little housekeeping items that are going to be updated on the municipal code how to administration and personnel.
Hi Amanda.
Hi Amanda, nice to meet you too. This is going to come up for your approval on the 22nd of August. There are eighteen small revisions, there are like title changes for employees and some things that are repealed, I'll kind of go through them quickly.
Can you get it on the presentation? Up there?
No. It's not that long. We're repealing the city council reimbursement for expenses, monthly compensation for mayor and monthly compensation for council members because it's in your protocol manual, so it doesn't really need to be in the municipal code. We have a title. It's up to date in your protocol manual, it's not up to date in municipal code. Title change for city treasurer, city clerk is just city clerk. And we're repealing auditing officer because we have a financial, a finance director and a finance department. Changing titles for the director of public works to public services. There's appointed officers or directors in the city that are appointed by the mayor. And there were title changes in there and repeals of like the community development director who is, which is now the planning and building director or manager. Let's see. City attorney is being repealed out of the municipal code because it's, city attorney is actually a contract employee instead of an employee. There is a title change for city services to read public records. So when people want public records, it's, we don't call it city services here in the city. And we're repealing leave sharing program because it's in our city of young personnel policies. And we're repealing the credit card use and change orders because they're part of the city of Young's financial policies. And that's going to be it. And in your packet on the 22nd will be this itemized and then there'll be the red lines that you can look at.
So just kind of changing titles to be more understandable?
Nope, it's what they are actually, yeah, just cleaning up.
Less confusion up there.
Yeah. Some of these are decades old.
Yeah.
The thing with public services, is that a common change? Because it doesn't seem like it's the same thing. Like a public works, you know, it's like a utility. That's what it comes to mind.
Well, because public services covers a broad, a broader umbrella.
Community services.
Yeah, the other. Community development is underneath that now, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, the trucks say public works, so you know.
Probably costs a lot of money to make those changes.
Change the stairs.
Slowly.
I'll have Cody bring that up.
Does it cost any money to make these changes?
The other thing, the other thing I love about it is public services.
Yeah.
So if you have any questions, we'll get to the 22nd.
Any questions now?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So it's okay, Thurston County, city of the own joint plan.
Public services works community.
Yeah.
So I know it's going to be hard to read this, but that's okay, the colors are more important than the reading. I will walk you through it.
Your inner teacher.
Turn your pages. A lot of extra copies. So this is also on our website, that's why I didn't like go crazy with it because you can pull this up on our website. So one thing we have worked on that never was done was a joint plan with Thurston County. So what this creates is a weird abnormality where our UGA has different zoning than what we have. So whenever we annex something in, it changes the zoning of that property. Thurston County never adopted our zoning map in 2016 when we did our last comp plan. So what we've been working on for the last like year and a half is getting them to adopt our zoning plan. So what this will.
UGA urban growth area?
Yes, UGA is urban growth area. So this is future, so all the colored parts on here are future city of young, right? They're in our urban growth area, they're bad, they're supposed to be city of young at some point. And this is what our future zoning is for those areas. So I'll walk you through that in just a second. So Thurston County never adopted these. So if you go to Thurston County zoning map, all of these areas except for a small list is R1 to five, which means one house per five acres. So when you, you can imagine when we have like an area zone C3, heavy commercial, and you have a property that's R1 to five and we annex it in, you have a heavy commercial area that has one house on it for five acres, it doesn't make any sense for us. Same with like industrial or commercial, other commercial uses. So the idea is to work with Thurston County to create a joint plan that they adopt and then they'll adopt our same zoning laws and rules and regulations. So that way when someone tries to build a mini storage and a heavy residential area, they won't be able to build it because hey, there's residential, they can't build mini storage here. So on this map in front of you, you'll see all of our future zoning. The very light yellow is low density residential, that's R4. The heavier, the thicker yellow or the darker yellow is moderate density, which is R6. And then high density is R16 or R14 and above. Pink is the light commercial you'll see, this is C1. This is like your walk-in shops, your Masonry, stuff like that. The heavier pink on there is large lot or heavier commercial, this would be like your Safeway, your Tractor Supply, your J&amp;I, stuff like that. And then large lot commercial, the dark red would be like your Costco, your Walmart, your Target, your giant box stores. If you look on here, you're purple and I'm colorblind, so if I miss a color, just fix it, tell me if I'm wrong. Next is industrial, it's that purple. So purple industrial is anything that like a manufacturing or right now it's aquatic, we have aquatic, it's a cabinet manufacturer up there, we have a car wrecking yard, those are the industrial uses. Institutional, the light blue is schools or other institutions, you'll see this light blue down here. This is Prairie Elementary. They are not in city limits, they are served by city water, but they're not in city limits, but they are in UGA, so they are future institutional. Green is parks and open space, you'll see two kind of larger green areas. The one on here in the bottom left is a large, huge wetlands, it's not developable. Like you can maybe stick a house here or there, but the idea is when we bring this in, we could turn it into hiking trails or whatever when it got annexed in eventually because there's just, it's not a developable lot. And same with this bottom right, that's over by Bald Hills where it floods a lot. And that area is not developable either. So same thing as bring it in, then you would turn it into some sort of park or open space hiking trails. And then you can see the dotted line is where the city of Young currently is. You might see a little weird yellow or a white dotted line in the top right corner, that is Longmire Park. And then the darker areas are future UGA. So what it will do is Thurston County has to adopt this, it's not us. You guys have already adopted this, we did our comp plan in 2016. But we will send a letter of recommendation, the mayor will send a letter and we'll have council vote on that to kind of give approval for the mayor to send that recommendation, just kind of show that we're all on board for this and we want Thurston County to adopt this. I'll be happy to answer any questions or comments or concerns or thoughts.
That non-developable, is that, I mean, would we use any of that for mitigation for like HCP?
Theoretically, there could be some, this area right here, because this wetland isn't super gopher habitat-ish, but it could be like best for sparrow habitat. Those are the two kind of we're protecting is the Oregon best for sparrow and the gopher. So there is areas in there that could be, but not a lot of it. But that is one here you could mitigate or maybe trade out with someone who needs wetlands and then you can mitigate that.
And the butterfly?
The, yeah, the checkered spot butterfly is a different beast we have, we don't have to mitigate that here, which I know, it's crazy, I know so much about these things. DuPont has checkered spot butterfly, we do not have it, but they are keeping an eye on it, same with the Western bumblebee. Yeah, I know a lot about animals. So Western bumblebee, we don't have the Western bumblebee, but it is something we are keeping an eye on just in case we need to mitigate for a Western bumblebee. Right now, we're just focused on the go through.
Find one.
What about the turtles?
That's right, yeah, the turtles, we don't have a big turtle population on our conference.
It listens to the high density residential that's over by Longmire, Longmire Park. Five, the five can bite loop, is it going to be passing right by there?
It'll cut right through the middle there, so that's why we zone.
No, no, that's what I was looking for was I was going, normally you don't put high density in the middle of nowhere where there's not public transportation, other things that will help out with that situation. But thank you for doing that.
So if you look, and you can kind of see where the loop runs, if you follow the orange line at the top left and it kind of falls down, if you follow that open space where there's nothing developed in between it, that is literally where the loop will run.
Okay.
So that gives you an idea of where the loop should, so a lot of our zoning, we did plan that kind of thing where yeah, the loop's going to be right here, Walmart's right there, you want higher density residential near that kind of thing.
Okay.
In industrial, can, can new car lots open up in that industrial? Yeah, industrial and C3, big box, a lot of the car lots, industrial's a lot more, industrial has all of our, not, the uses that you don't want to see in a city center, you know, that's what's industrial. And so a lot of our, you know, the wrecking yard, right, is industrial. We have to, as a city, you have to allow for everything. You can't zone, you can't prevent anything from being built that is legal by state law because then you're discriminating. So you have to allow for everything, but you want to put it in places that make sense. We don't want, you know, I wouldn't want a wrecking yard across from an R6 because you'd be in your house and you're looking like, oh great, there's a wrecking yard right there. So we do try to balance it out that way by, like you said, putting industrial near industrial. If you look at this industrial area in the top right, there's other industrial right next to that. You have the water treatment facility, the wrecking yard and all that. And this other industrial on the top left is separated by the bike house.
If for industrial, can somebody want to do hydroponics? Could that be done in the industrial or is that fall under agriculture?
Um, I'd have to get back to on that, I think industrial would be allowed in there, but I think it would be allowed in industrial, but I don't know for exactly, I haven't checked into hydroponics or codes.
Or maybe light industrial, that's a different zone, isn't it?
We only have industrial, county does have light industrial versus heavy industrial, we do not, we just have industrial. We don't have a light versus heavy.
We don't?
No, we have just industrial. County does have light and does have heavy. We may have that in the past.
If you could find out, just in the reason why is that that is something that in the future, you know, somebody may want to invest in and be able to do kind of like similar to what you see with the wholesale or Jasons. And so, you know, being able to accommodate something like that in particular by the water accumulation facility because hydroponics doesn't need the water, you know, fresh water can tap into that and then that becomes something agricultural use.
Yeah, I appreciate it for sure, I'll make sure. Check. Is there any other question about anything on the map, locations and stuff, why it was done the way it was? And you can, if you notice and look, you'll kind of see that we try to focus our commercial on 510 and as you get farther away from 510 or 507, it turns into lighter industrial, so doesn't feel as can, you know, congeal, so.
Any other questions? Nope. Great, thank you. All right, local road safety plan. Who that?
Oh, we got a big old package.
Oh wow. Oh man.
I got lots of homework.
No, this should be pretty quick. Local road safety plan, probably for those of you that were here last November, you remember we authorized SCJ consultants to prepare a local road safety plan for us. Why do we have to prepare this plan? Well, it's required for any state or federal funding. It's been a requirement for quite a long time, but it's finally now getting enforced. So we have to have an approved local road safety plan on hand in order to be eligible for those funds. So we've been working on this for quite a while. I had brought a copy of it, this is our final draft. It is at WashDot right now, this plan does not have to be approved by city council, but it does need to be approved by WashDot because they're the ones that are distributing the federal funds. So I brought a copy for all of you to take home, it's kind of an interesting report because what it contains is a lot of analysis of crashes, severe crashes, fatalities, although we haven't had any during this particular study period, bicycle and pedestrian accidents. And it's created, in here, there's a kind of interesting map in here, you might take a look at. But I'm not going to go through this with you here tonight, but there is a heat map that we created showing where all of our severe crashes and pedestrian crashes have been. We use that data to prioritize the areas where safety improvements can be made. So it's kind of a, it's a very data-driven report. So I, in here also is a tabulation of all the intersection conditions, crashes, big table of those that are severe, the type of crashes that occurred, why they have, et cetera, there's a lot of information, a lot of data here, you'll probably find it kind of interesting. So, but I'm not going to go through it, but what we are going to do is get this over to WashDot here, probably this, this, probably next week. And get their blessing on it, they've already reviewed it once, they've commented on it and now we just got to get their blessing and then we're official. So I'm bringing it to you tonight just so that I can be transparent, kind of show you what we've been doing. So we're pretty much done with it, so.
So does it actually have the duration of time when that was all monitored?
Yeah.
Like, oh cool.
Oh yeah, yeah, it's a very specific required survey time that we're prepared to use. Right, right, up in the front is a summary of how it was studied. So, yeah, the table contents talks about, you know, the purpose, the methodology of the analysis, the study area that we conducted it in. There's historic crash data all included in here. What are the biggest risk factors that we've been facing here? Where our highest priority locations and a list of countermeasures. In other words, proposed solutions to some of these safety problems, so.
Is there a digital form? Digital copy of this? Can we put that on our website?
We sure can.
Make sure that folks can see it.
I'd like to wait till next week till I get the approved copy because it will stand. Have signatures on it, we have to.
So when they approve it, I mean, there's, they're just probably going to prove it, you don't foresee any problems?
Well, they've already reviewed it and they provided some comments on it. It's a, there's a, it's kind of a standard list of things that your report must contain in order to be approved. And there's certain elements that have to be in there, our consultant knows what those are, they've done these before. So they're all included in here, I don't even know what their comments were, they're probably very minor because they follow that standard procedure, so. Any other questions? Told you it'd be short and sweet, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll just let you guys have the copy.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Budget amendment discussion. Very short.
No, I haven't done this.
I'm actually going to use the screen.
Thank you, Kathy. I thought your attorney that odd.
Thank you, Kathy.
So. I clicked on this shared screen. You lost. Yeah.
I think that's stolen wars or the one there.
Cody.
Cody.
News computer.
No, it's.
Is this one?
Yeah.
Reveal that, I hope everyone goes over national right now. I don't know if you already seen it, started at five, it ends at eight o'clock. Pretty cool, cool turnout, it's a big turnout right now, huge lines for everything, hopefully they die down, but a lot of local businesses and organizations don't need their time and product to show support for our place.
Well, I'll just talk about it, there's only one. So in June, council did pass ordinance 1099, which was for the $225, $225,000 for the property purchase. So we've already passed an ordinance for that one. Thank you. So the second one is a request from the police department for $22,000. And what they're asking for is to front load the officer that we planned, that we budgeted to hire in 2024. They're asking if we could hire earlier in 2023. We have a vacant position that's creating like a half a year of available salary and benefits for that half year. And then the additional cost would be about $10,000, well about $12,000 for their remaining salary and benefits for the end of the year. And then there's about $10,000 in equipment, uniforms, that sort of thing to get a new officer out on streets. So those are the only two that we have right now, which is not very common. We do have some projects that Cody is going to be updating, but we just don't have that information available right now. Most of those, I believe, are grant-funded projects, so they, there might be a little bit of match money to that, but we need to, you know, when we budget the projects, we're never quite sure when they're going to start or if they're going to carry over to the next year. And so we did budget these projects that he's going to bring forward. We just need to match up the actual expenditures that are happening in 2023 with the revenues that we are going to receive in 2023. So those will be brought forward later this year. But for right now, only the $22,000 for the front load of the officer is the only request on the table. So our plan is to, we can discuss it in finance committee next Tuesday. And then we would bring it to council and ordinance, the last meeting of the month. So any questions?
So you said it was a vacant position?
So there's one vacant position, so that means there's salary and benefit savings from that vacancy.
Right.
And so we just need a little bit more for the, for the introduction, bringing this new person in, paying them through the end of the year. So, yeah. I believe the $10,000 also includes Academy.
Yeah, it's about $8,000 for the academy costs to get them in, if they can get them in this year.
Yeah.
And part of the reason why, why they're bringing it forward is they have a couple really good candidates, some entry level candidates. The way it works in the police world, if you don't get them while you can, they're going to go somewhere else. So chief just, that's what he brought forward is he has a couple really good candidates in the pipeline in the background. And we like to do a lot for that job too.
So this was a request from Chief Rob Carlson?
Yes. Yeah, so him and I worked on pulling the numbers together. So, yeah, he's over in the dump tank.
Isn't the, the academy, is there, I know the one's ending, we have the one guy that's in there right now and it's coming out in October.
Michael, yeah.
Yeah. So are they going to do another one this year or it still would be next year probably?
It all depends when they can get them in.
Okay.
Though, I think they're going to, they'll try to get them in as soon as they can. I think it's him, I'm not positive to be honest, but I think it's him. So anyway, I think they're going to try to get them in for the end of the year and which would have the academy cost. And then he had a computer MCT when they come on, so the startup cost can get a little bit expensive. So radio, radios now, portable radios, $10,000. The new radios that have come out with.
Were we able to close on the land yet?
Not yet, we got to do a quiet title on the sliver across the street. So the point two acres or point three, whatever it is. They're just, they're, our attorney is fixing that with the title company to make sure that we do get that as part of our, the package. So he had to go through a quiet title, I never heard of a quiet title until he taught me about it. And so he's doing the legwork to go down the, to get that done with the quiet title. And then, once that's done, we should be all done and good to go.
Just real quick, this is a little bit off topic, the chase the other day, were any of the officers' cars, were there, was there any damage to?
So Rob hasn't, hasn't told me about any damage, I know he did pit.
I know they did pit.
We did the pit maneuver, and if it was done perfectly by the book, those pit wraps will protect them. But I haven't, I did not hear of any damage and I've seen Moody driving his car around, so.
I'm just curious.
He must have did it perfect. Moody's the one that did the pit on, he's got some experience.
He does, yeah.
Yeah, and they were spiked too, we spiked it.
Okay.
Spike strips and then the pit, so it worked.
All right. Any questions about that?
I do, Stephanie, did you happen to have a name change? Yes, okay, it went from Dice to Nanavich. And how do you spell that?
Just like it sounds.
Great.
Okay, any other questions on that budget? Okay, next, event impacts.
So what you have here, there's copies or?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so it's up on the screen, so what we did, the chief worked with the finance department to do calculation.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Cody.
No.
That is a big arrow.
It covers everything.
Okay. Right there, okay. So, oh, the police chief and Stephanie and her department worked in finalizing kind of the impacts of the Pride Fest and drag show that followed. And we just added the Prairie Days event for kind of comparison purposes. To give you an idea, the Prairie Days is a city-sponsored event that is a parade. So a lot of that cost from Prairie Days is because of the parade and the required number of officers needed and for and public services employees to make that happen. So it's a very, very detailed breakdown of, most of this is overtime that you'll see. You can see the Pride Fest, you have overtime hours, overtime cost. And then Prairie Days is the section to the right, the overtime hours and overtime cost. Below that, you'll see some costs for food. And that was the food to feed the, I believe, 57? 57 officers is what I believe Rob has said, 57 officers were there. So that was the food to feed that, we don't feed any employees on Prairie Days because typically most of them are here for the parade and then they're, they're out or a couple of them stick around. But it's not an all-day thing. So the total was in the ballpark, I think of 84, 8500, right there, 83, 85, .39. The only variable in that impacts to city personnel would be employees that chose to use comp time or take comp time in place of overtime. So the police didn't use, utilize that option. A few employees in the public services department did. And so the way the comp time works is they do have the ability to cash that in at the end of the year or they have the ability to use that in time off. So that was the only, and I believe, how many did you say, Cody, one or two?
We had two on the Pride Festival and Prairie Days, probably on six, that took comp time, six or seven.
So just kind of keep that in mind, that that number could be maybe a thousand dollars higher on either event if in fact those employees chose to cash out that comp time in lieu of taking that. So that's the only variable with that, these are obviously just our costs. This is, this is the city of Young cost, we know that there were other costs associated with it.
So this is not, this is not Thurston County Sheriff, none of that, they all have their own, no fire.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
I was just curious about the, you know, the food of the officers that they, you said there was 50 that we supplied. I believe 57, 57, and was that like breakfast, lunch, dinner, or was it just one meal, was it just?
I think it was maybe like coffee and donuts in the morning, lunch, and then.
Some stir. And pizza.
They had pizzas.
So pizza, Costco pizzas, and then they had, so it was kind of a breakfast lunch, they're kind of a sustain all day thing. And then for 50 something people, that was how much on that though? I think that's pretty reasonable, considering the family of three, when I go out to dinner, it's like $70, I think that's pretty good for 50.
Maybe Casamia had the pizza?
No, they did Costco pizza, but I want to say that he had Casamia for the lunch, I had Casamia.
Yeah.
57 people, that's pretty good.
So a couple things, the police officers who are normally scheduled
The police officers who were normally scheduled for that day, I don't show those costs because they were not earning overtime, they were just earning straight time. The other thing is, you know, we have police officers of all pay ranges. So that's why, I saw Brian over there, like, I know exactly what he's doing. So yes, there are different hourly rates depending on who the officer is and how longevity and that sort of thing.
The, the lines that are blank, are you saying those are the officers that were just?
So I, or for presentation purposes, I had their names listed.
Oh, okay.
But I just, I didn't wanna show the names. So yeah, so they, if it's blank under Pride Fest, then they did not um, have any overtime for that day.
It was just their normal shift.
Right. And then if you go over, they did have hours on Prairie Days, so.
There's some, they were, some officers work on Prairie Days, but not on.
And that's okay. Yeah.
So the first column indicates individual officers.
Right, just says police that.
Okay. That's Yon, and that's Yon.
Yeah, that's Yon, their individual officers. I didn't, I took their names off and just write praise.
I believe so.
Yeah.
May, I ask why it is that you didn't do that for the parks in the sewer? When you looked at overtime for Prairie Days, how come you didn't put an individual employee? Or was it just one employee?
They did not. There was only one parks employee that worked uh, fifteen minutes for Pride Fest.
Okay.
So the parks, the sewer, and the other parks employee, you can see if you go over to Prairie Days, the first parks employee did eight and a half hours of overtime, the sewer employee did eight of overtime. The third, the parks employee did not do any time.
Got it. I guess that's where I was.
Yeah.
Because originally.
Each of those rows had a, an employee's name, and I couldn't show that, so.
Now it makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. And then at the debrief, which I don't, did you, you didn't go to that, that was long.
Right.
So do you know, did they, I guess they're putting together compilation of, you know, Thurston County Sheriff, their budget or whatever they spent.
In the debrief there?
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm assuming that's gonna come out. Um, Tillman kind of brought that up.
Okay, yeah, no, he was there, he was a part of that.
Yeah, just, cuz I think, just curious. Okay.
Yeah, I can ask, I can ask Tillman if that is part of something they're gonna break out.
He wasn't sure. He said he was gonna check with Rob, but I was just curious.
Yep.
I guess the last question I have uh, is about Prairie Days. And I see that it's drawn out for overtime hours and overtime costs. But this isn't in contrast to a prior year. This is just, this is this year. So I don't know if this is good or bad, because it's the first time we're really tracking it.
No, yeah, Prairie Days stays pretty consistently. It takes a, almost an exact same number of officers each year to close the road stand.
Yeah.
Uh, same with public work staff. So the, the parade route, as long as the parade route doesn't change drastically, the number of, of employees needed to close roads down don't change. So uh, the only thing that would change from year to year is probably the overtime rate more so. Uh, and so there would be some fluctuation in that. Um, but, but typically, I know when I was over there for, you know, twenty-five years, the, it pretty much didn't change as far as the, the needed uh, you know, personnel to make that happen. So I would say the Prairie Days one is pretty consistent within, you know, five, six hundred bucks probably each, each year.
And that's just being shown to show.
Yeah, all we did was just to show.
Just to say, here's another city event.
That was all.
Yeah.
That's the only reason we put it up there is just to, to contrast it. So we're looking at, if you look at the overtime, you got sixty-six point five-one on this side, and then a hundred and ten point ninety-one on that side. It's about, you know, it kind of gets close. If you're to double the sixty-six point five-one, you get close to the same amount at the Pride Fest. So what we're looking at at the Pride Fest is just more overtime. Yeah. Yeah. And like I said, mostly overtime from Prairie Days is the parade. That's the biggest impact to Prairie Days, would be a parade. Thanks for being transparent.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions on that? All right, thank you. Mayor's report.
The only thing that did noteworthy really for this, for these purposes, was met with um, President for the Multi-Care um, in Olympia. Um, good conversation. They're definitely excited to come out and expand in Yon. Um, gonna be, meaning particularly, this was, he was more in charge of their expansion for primary care. But I'm gonna have another meeting with her um, person for Indigo. Indigo, they don't have to have a setup in necessarily, the medical facility can be any commercial. And so they're excited about it, though. Um, there's talks about, that they're, they're gonna be joining for the next YMC meeting later this month. Um, and they're excited to try to partner with us any way we can, so. Yeah, that's it. Any questions on that, though?
I'm so excited about that. It can't happen soon enough.
Yeah.
Indigo's aren't twenty-four hours, right? They're just longer hours.
Um, I believe they're just longer hours, yeah. Yeah, it's a good first step for.
Totally, yeah.
Do you have a preference, or are you gunning towards one or the other when it comes to an Indigo or one that's similar to what's in Spanway?
I just want urgent care in Yon. So whoever wants to come out here, um, I think we're willing to work with.
Well, they're both multi-care. That's what I'm gonna, do you want the bigger entity? Or do we want the smaller one that could come in?
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. I don't know, I don't have a preference on it. I like, I personally like Indigo. Um, I think they're great. Um, but yeah, for, as far as I'm coming to the city of Yon, no preference.
Great. Okay, anything else on that? Okay, initiatives.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry. Sorry, I realize, I know, like, well, I thought it seemed logical to start over there.
Um, this is a good times to ask questions, say, this is, I'm kind of interested in doing it.
Yeah, sorry.
Staff can go back and um, start, you know, create that and take it back into your other groups. So if you have anything you wanna.
I have lots of ideas, but I'm really excited to hear everyone's this first time around.
Sure. And sometimes people, it's not every meeting.
No, it is, and sorry, I was thinking, well, it just seemed weird to start over here, so anyway, sorry.
No, it's totally fine, yeah, okay.
Right, right.
Um, it's something that I think would be really interesting, uh, working with. About, for families, is that?
Family for families.
Family for families, uh, working with them and Yon being a food desert. Well, there's various places that there are food deserts. I think it would be a really nice idea to see if we might be able to, and I'm reaching out uh, like Food is Free Tacoma, which is part of Food is Free Washington, uh, the way that they set that up. Kind of getting where it's uh, community gardens or even getting it so people who want to garden on their own property, uh, finding a way to try to help out, um, either help, uh, finding a way to provide uh, start, uh, starts or seeds to people and be able to get it so that then they can, when they have an overabundance of tomatoes, cucumbers, zucchinis, which is always the key one that everybody seems to have, and squash, that we can find ways and maybe find locations that we can put up, um, a little stand. The way that Food for Free in Tacoma works is there are people who, there are businesses as well as people who give up, who allow on their property a small little stand. And all it says on the stand is, take what you need, give what you can. And it helps out. And so I was thinking that might uh, at some point, I wanna reach out to them and find out if they're doing that with Yon. Cuz I think it, you know, it adds to our theme of the pride of Prairie and trying to help out. And as I said, to kind of close off that food desert that we have, I think might be something worthwhile to do and see about getting started.
How many people use the community garden?
Uh, the community garden is just for uh, is demonstration purposes. And yes, people can go and take from that small one.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't have any stats on it.
Yeah, no, I, no, I know what you're talking about. I was just curious.
I don't think that's well-known enough, that people can go, can learn. That was originally one of their plans, was to have a teaching garden, so you could take that knowledge home and just take vegetables. Things are going rotten over there because people don't pick them any.
It sounds like they're doing more for education purposes, especially in the farmer's market. They're utilizing it by the most.
But as I said, I think that'd be something really nice, uh, when I was on social, when I was on Facebook, uh, there was a gentleman that uh, I had reached out to who was looking for doing something like that here in Yon, to try and find out. So I pointed him in some directions and then he used the term, he ghosted me. You know, I haven't heard anything else from him. But it's something that I think uh, if we can bring up and get kind of started right before spring next year, I think it'd be something really neat to do for Yon. And we can get our FFA uh, students involved, all these other things. And it could be really a good community thing, I think.
Anything else?
Um, I, I, I'm excited for next year, hot summer nights on Fridays. So once we get our one-way outlet, uh, couplets put together, food trucks, a DJ every Friday night, I think it'd be a great community event thing, but we'll see how that goes.
Anything else?
No.
Ashley?
Yeah, I am always trying to stay connected to the community and thinking about families and their safety, whether it's in their home or outside of their home. And so one thing that I'm working on that I should let everyone know is the child passenger safety training, asking uh, Child Easterson Fire and um, our police department to get that training. It's a four-day training, um, that would be done this winter, that is paid for by a grant from um, Child Care, Child Action Council, I believe is what it's called, and they're based out of Olympia. Um, then, and then with that, Child Action Council also does some really fun events, like a mobile um, a mobile bicycle training for kids. So there's, we have so many things going on, the skate park and a lot of, I've heard a lot of times that the children aren't wearing helmets or they're not jaywalking, but jaybicycling, if that's the correct term. So teaching them how to do that, especially as our city expands. So this would be something free that could be done in conjunction with another event that um, our parks is planning, instead of having to do it with a school. So there's also the opportunity with that same program to give out free bicycle helmets. So I don't know, I can't say so enough times. There's like, I could go on and on about how excited I am about the possibility of that coming. Um, but I do have a question, and that is, who is it that writes our grants? Is there a specific employee here, or is it left to different department heads?
Usually department heads right now. We're looking at the possibility of having a, like a part-time um, grants writer, but.
Great, that would be beneficial. Okay, thank you.
Pass our grant writer.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything?
Well, I was gonna say, you also have under uh, public service, the contract with the one organization to help out if it falls under the category there.
The department members, yeah, they have those writing grants. We have Pat, now Brad, and myself. Big grants in the last, they've done a lot of small grants.
That's what I thought, but I don't know. I've seen in other cities that they have a, a single person for doing all of that. Great.
Beautiful.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Yeah, that was pretty interesting. I'm starting to see Ashley everywhere going now, it's pretty cool. I go to my church, my little, she's there too, she's trying to go over or something. But it's good, no, it's appreciated, but I, I, I don't know of anything. But I thank you, she, she is, she is doing a lot of it actually. So I know you showed up at the, the dinners to help bring awareness uh, to some things there. I'm not sure exactly, but I know you left some pamphlets down there, so. I was like, oh, there she is, she left that there. I don't know.
Okay.
That was like an extension of my time, I liked that.
Terry.
No initiatives, but I had a question. I went to the music festival last weekend and then the other festival the weekend before. And uh, more than one organizer of each of those festivals came dashing over to me and said, "Oh my God, oh my God, we heard that you're gonna change the fee structure and we're not gonna be able to afford our festival and what's going on?" And I'm like, I don't know.
We are working with them a hundred percent. Todd, you wanna try and talk about what we've done so far with different partners? I, I'm guessing she's talking about the barbecue rally.
Oh, yeah, yes, 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 all that.
Yeah, I'm gonna be with the chamber, I think tomorrow or Thursday. Um, what we've been working on for the last couple of months. And so is a complete revision to our facilities rental guide. Um, just a lot more language, cleaning up a lot of things that will make it, I guess, um, easier on both sides for renters and the city itself, protect the city quite a bit more than what we currently have in place. Um, the fee structure is obviously gonna be a council decision, right? Whatever council decides to do with the fee structure, we will present uh, some ideas on a fee structure based on things, uh, based on events that happened this year and just some ideas on those uh, fee structure, um, maybe a, a better way of doing it. Uh, but again, that's gonna come down to council and whatever you decide to do with that fee structure. So uh, we're not gonna change anything. We're gonna present some different language, I think, that'll help. Um, and then the fee structure, just a piece of that, um, as far as that goes. You know, the presentation tonight about the impacts of events. You know, one of the things we've been looking at uh, from, from the city side, even the legal side of it, is that how much can we offset, right? How much can we, how much can we have the event uh, pay for, you know, in, in, what can that be done? So we're, we're doing tons of, tons of work on that. Uh, the actual draft that we put together will go to our attorney um, this week. Um, and then once that's done, we're gonna get it out to council. So you have a couple of weeks prior to the September study session to look at all our suggestions. Um, and then we'll go from there. So it's obviously very early and, and I understand that there's some concern that, you know, uh, you know, we're gonna scare away, scare away events and everything like that. That's totally not the goal. But honestly, the goal is to bring us more into a current way of doing business. Because the way we've done business um, is not sustainable. It's not sustainable to our staff, it's not sustainable to our budgets, it's not sustainable to our parks or our buildings. So we're just trying to look at ways that we think will improve the experience, not only for the event, but future years going forward. So um, there's a ton of new stuff in there. Uh, we spent, we have three hours total in just our event review committee. We've had three hours going through it with a fine-tooth comb, uh, comparing it to what we currently do, to what we're proposing we do. Um, and some are very little, some are little things, just like, you know, if you, you have alcohol, having a licensed service bartender, you know, being charged the alcohol, little things like that. Uh, certificates of insurance, you know, things like that, that we, that we need to get. And so we're just trying to clean up our, our previous way, our previous forms. And um, you know, this has been a learning, learning year for sure, on, on many, on many respects. And so one of the things we're trying to do is to look at all the events, right? We're not trying to make changes based on one event. We're trying to look at all the events and what they do and how they do it, what works and what doesn't work. And, and so um, you know, public, public service is part of that, police chief's part of that discussion. Our, our licensing person is part of that discussion. So we got, we got great conversation happening at the table and it's fresh, right? All these events are fresh, they're happening. And so um, all the events that just got done, you know, the one before, I believe it was um, wasn't the music festival, it was barbecue, the band, right? I guess the band set off um, alarms at businesses during sound check. Apparently they're, they're, the bass or something, it vibrated, it get, it set the entire strip mall off. So, but it's one of those things where, you know, we've never had an entire strip mall be set off on alarms on music. But that is something going forward, you know, when we put a stage in that park, we're probably gonna have more performances, right? So what does that mean for noise? And, and how do we, you know, how do we kind of navigate that in a way that, that makes sense? And we can still host them, but it's not harmful to the neighborhood, you know, impacting businesses around it. So we're trying to make a very comprehensive review of, of all our events, all our facility rentals. And so we're excited to kind of roll that out to you in September. The idea is that we roll it out in September at a study session. Take your feedback, get your guidance. Probably come back in October, study session one more time with some revisions based on uh, your input. Um, and then bring it to council uh, no later to November, so that we can make sure all these events, you know, that are planning on doing something next year, have plenty of time to go through the new process and understand the new process uh, before we start, you know, booking, booking events for the following year. As of right now, there are no events booked for next year.
No, nothing's been booked for next year. Um, we're being very proactive with reaching out to those organizations, so, and making sure that we get input from them. Um, throughout, like Todd said, these multiple meetings, public meetings, public can come in, comment on there, what their thoughts are on it. And then council, of course, can make the final decision likely in November, um, one of those council meetings.
Yeah, so the intent is not to charge fees that prevents anyone from coming in.
Good.
And uh, you know, barbecue, I'll just use barbecue rally as a good example. They use uh, LTAC money. They get LTAC money to make that event happen. And so LTAC funds are available to pay for rental fees. And so if the fee, let's just say, goes up for the barbecue rally, they have a way to get that through LTAC anyway, cuz they're, they're an LTAC uh, event.
And LTAC is a lodging tax.
But they might not get the money. I mean, if we had more people subscribe for that, for those funds, they may not get it.
Yeah.
Well, it's really great, if I may interject, is I was told that with the LTAC application, you can apply right now for next year. So you can apply anytime you want. So being late is not. You can apply anytime you want, so being late is not an excuse.
No, no, I know.
And the final piece to that is all events, all events under, there are certain events that are listed, but we're kind of gonna broaden that a little bit. All those events, whether approved or denied, will go through council. Regardless of what the event is, so if it's an event going on in one of our facilities that'll come to council. Direct, we're gonna recommend an event review committee, which all events will go through a review committee. Which will consist of all the departments that are impacted by the events. They will go over that application, they will look at it and say, well, you're gonna need this, this and this. They agree to it, then it'll go to council for approval, so. Lot more.
One more thing, when it comes to the LTAC, what's the timeline on that app that we had?
The timeline for the LTAC funds?
When she'll project.
Project, the. It's it.
Oh. I don't know about that. Cody, you know anything about that app?
Yes, we just got our, our avatar mock-up design, and that's what we're waiting on to adapt to go live. So it's a water tower avatar, we were gonna go the pocket gopher, but you know, we're trying to beat it up, so we went with a water tower avatar. And you know, when we have that done, that'll come to you guys, and then you'll see it, and then we'll go back to it. So we're waiting on the avatar fish, that's a character that they make for you. I didn't know if you know of avatars.
So it could be as soon as a month.
Oh, and one more thing, on our beautification corner on Tim's, I noticed the plants are getting a little wilted and not looking so beautiful. So maybe I'll just go talk to them about watering them, or maybe getting bigger plants or something, they're like little twigs sticking up on the corner.
Give it a chance.
Well, they could have.
Yeah, they cost a lot, I know.
Any other initiatives, Terry?
No.
I actually have something that I never do, but not, I just, I wanna stay on top of the museum, the Yon Museum. I think it's really important, and my fear is, I know there's a lot, been a lot of talk about the YMCA, which I'm not saying would, would or wouldn't be a good fit, but the timeline for that is possibly way out, so. I just wanna keep, I don't know what the answer is, but I just wanna make sure that, that's, that we're looking or we're thinking about that, because I think it's important that the history just stay alive.
Yeah, so the first step for that, just to give everybody an update, is we will get an estimate on the repair work needed for the existing building. So we're gonna have a contractor go in there and give us a, a very specific number. And then we'll bring that back to you, and that, just to you actually, you're just gonna, you're gonna make the call. Pauline, I think we can also relook at the EIC, I mean, the EIC, if I remember correctly, is gonna house the museum and the library, which meant that the light, where the library is at right now, we could then sell that, which would help pay for the cost of the EIC. And so, you know, maybe we, we look at having that discussion at the next study session, getting, you know, what can do with that. How that can look, because then, you know, again, that's something that we already have the design for, because Grant paid for us to get that concept design. We've got the land already supposedly, we've got everything, we just now need to say, okay, are we gonna build it or not?
We just need the money.
But, yeah, that's right, but still, yeah.
If we were gonna incorporate all the museum items, which I don't know how many there are, into the new library, why don't we take them over to the old library and spread them around to see how that looks? What's in the, is it like big wagon wheels, or what's in the museum, I don't know.
There is a wagon.
Suspended from the ceiling, like they do the canoes at the round.
The museum, correct?
Yeah.
On the wall, yeah.
Yeah.
We've got a little finance budget book today, we're gonna put it in there.
Just, I don't know, I just wanna make sure that it stays kind of in the front, because I think it's important, so. Yeah, alright, I have nothing else, so, and you're done? Alright, we're done.